All right, it is 6:30. We will call the Monday, January 9th, 2023 City of Mayor, City Council meeting to order. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll start with the oath of office, please, please.
So for the oath of office, we have four people will have swear in. First will be Mike Dodge, then Nikki McNeely, and Peggy Wagner, and Derek Ely, correct?
Yep.
All right. So you have your pledge on the screen there. So you need to just copy. I'll have you read the oath and swear.
Perfect. I, Mike Dodge, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor for the City of Mayor, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God.
Nikki?
I, Nikki McNeely, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the City of, the Office of City Council Member of the City of Mayor, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God.
I, Peggy Wagner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council Member of the City of Mayor, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God.
I, Derek Ely, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council Member of the City of Mayor, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God.
Do you remember the occasion? A certificate?
Thank you.
For your election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To your elected office. Congratulations.
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 All right, with that, we'll move to the agenda. Is there anything on the agenda we need to pull for, or any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comments. We'll move to the consent agendas. Is there anything that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us to regular business item number 11. Consider the adoption of resolution amending the comp plan to change the designation of certain parcels. So, you go ahead, John.
Good evening. I'm John Anderson, the Municipal Development Group, the consulting planner for mayor, and we have a request here. There's actually four items that are kind of all related to the same request, items 11, 12, 13, and 14. The first one, item 11, is a comprehensive plan amendment to change a couple parcels from medium-density residential to public and quasi-public. These parcels are located with the Zion Lutheran Church and School site, located down off of Blue Jay Avenue and Second Street Northwest. The request overall is to expand the existing school three-classroom expansion, and as part of this, there's an existing single-family house on Second Street Northwest that will be removed to allow for the expansion. As part of that process, these parcels, along with a couple parcels, south of Second Street Northwest, will all be combined into one parcel that'll be owned jointly by the church and school. Two of those parcels were guided for medium-density residential, one south of a parking lot, south of the existing church, south of Second Street, and the other one was this existing single-family home. They were zoned for low-density residential due to their uses, and that would be the second item here, would be the rezoning from low-density residential to public-institutional, and that's another request here that we're looking at. So we're going to change the comprehensive future land use designation of the property to public and quasi-public, and the zoning to public and institutional district. In addition to that, there's two other requests, a variance to reduce the off-street parking requirement by an additional three stalls, and a site plan review for the three classroom expansion of the school. This would include potentially some landscaping as a fence. I know at one point there were some trees being proposed, the building itself would be looked at, and things like that. I guess I'll kind of keep it to the first request, though, right now, and that would be the comprehensive plan amendment. Basically, this makes sense. I've talked with Metropolitan Council, who also has to review any comprehensive plan amendment within the city, because we are in the seven-county metropolitan area. They didn't see any problems with this, and this would be submitted to them for official approval, once the city council would grant approval, approval of that, that request. So with that being said, we're looking to change those two parcels from medium-density residential to public and quasi-public. So with that, I can take any questions on the comprehensive plan amendment.
Any questions for the city planner? I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-3, amending the mayor 2040 comprehensive plan.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the second request, business item 12, is the rezoning. I kind of touched on that, and, and once again, this kind of follows the comprehensive plan amendment. Same parcels are being changed, the zoning. So it'd go from R1 residential to public-institutional, which is actually, you know, going to be the use of the entire site. So with that being said, it's pretty straightforward. The zoning map would be amended to reflect that, and I guess if there are any questions, I can take those on the rezone.
Questions for the rezone.
So the second parcel off of Blue Jay, is that the existing?
Yes. So on the, let's see here, right here. So if you look south of Second Street, there's the existing church building, and there's a parcel just to the south of that. It's got some pine trees and part of a parking lot on. That parcel is also zoned R1 low-density residential, so we're changing that as well. It's currently a parking lot, and it's just more, since we were rezoning the other one, we figured let's do this one and get everything, you know, so it's consistent, so.
Was it under compliance with, or the water, water district, hard, hard surface area?
Yeah, so that's all been accounted for.
Can you come up to the podium, please? Can you come up to the podium? Because I listened to the planning and zoning, and it was very difficult to hear anybody there, so.
Kurt Zimmerman, I live in Second Street. So that, where the parking lot now, that was all concrete, right? Percentage-wise, was, was not, was that in compliance? I guess. Was under the compliance?
Yes, that's all been looked at. It's just a separate parcel. We're just rezoning to make the zoning correct.
That was meeting the hard surface area?
Yeah, and that one isn't 100% parking.
I know.
Any other questions for John? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 236 for the rezoning.
I'll make that motion.
A motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Okay, the third item is the.
John, just real quick before, before we get into this one, because this is going to be a little more discussion, I think, I just want to, because it's been a month or six weeks since we've talked, I want to make sure, give Kurt Curtis, is there anything more you need to add? I can give you a couple, a minute or two, if you want to add anything more to get caught up on anything, or you need to come up. I'll give you just a couple minutes, because I know this isn't a public hearing, but I want to make sure we didn't, because we didn't have that meeting in December, that we've captured everything.
Well, the last plans that I seen, there was no, nothing about a fence or anything. There was nothing, was, the planning commission was, was denied at the planning commission meeting, so we're going on that. As far as, is there any difference?
Nothing, nothing else, okay.
Nothing has been addressed. Nothing's been addressed in that or anything?
For what?
Is there going to be a fence, or isn't there going to be a fence?
We'll be talking about that on the site review.
Okay.
All that's going to get talked about.
Okay.
Then we'll go into the site review. If there's going to be a fence.
Okay.
What's going to be done. And I think there's been an agreement between Zion and the property owner, I believe. So do you guys want to speak at all? I'll give you a couple minutes if you want.
So I'm, I'm Derek Main. We live just to the west of the, the house that's going to be removed. There had been talks that we may have an agreement, and we might, but to this point, I haven't heard anything from Zion, so.
Okay.
Nothing's been said to us, I guess, to this point.
Okay, okay. We'll revisit it. And then, of course, Zion, Jerry, if there's anything you want to, you can have a couple minutes also, to be fair.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Thomas. I'm representing Zion Lutheran Church and School, and my comments are mainly related to item number 13 on your agenda regarding the parking variance request made by Zion for its proposed classroom addition, plus one short comment on the business item number 14, the site plan approval. On the site plan approval, after the planning commission meeting on December 6th, and its resulting confusion, members of the building committee met with Mayor Dodge and City Administrator Nick Johnson to discuss this further. Result of that meeting was that Zion would go back to the original privacy fence request, and discussion agreed that it would put up a six-foot privacy fence along the entire north-south property line between Zion and Derek Main's property, in lieu of the seven deciduous trees that have been shown on earlier site plan drawings. And this had been worked out. Nick Johnson and Derek have been emailing back and forth and have come to this agreement with us. Zion did agree, did request that Derek allows to put the fence directly on the property line, and from what I'm, I believe he has agreed to do that, and we thank him for that. So we're totally in agreement with that. Then, moving on to item number 13, which is the parking variance. I thank you, first of all, for taking your time to read the materials I sent to you by email last week, Monday. If there are any questions about what was sent to you, I can answer those during your discussion of that item coming up here. You received a set of 34 photos taken over 12 days between December 7th and 25th. The photos and onsite observations by Zion Building Committee members clearly show there is absolutely no evidence to back up any, any of the claims which Mr. Zimmerman made at the planning commission meeting regarding parking around Zion. There are no cars parked in front of his house, as he claimed. Nine cars over a period of 20 minutes driving past his house hardly constitutes a parade, as he described it. Likewise, there is no evidence to back up any of the other parking claims or concerns made by Mr. Zimmerman. All of Mr. Zimmerman's claims dealt with enforcement or perceived violations on public streets. Those are not zoning questions, but need to be dealt with by the sheriff's department. The letter from Jacob Salphy, Zion's attorney, details why the planning commission was in error when it used the parking comments to decide on the parking variance request. It also provides the criteria that are to be followed under state statute to decide on the variance question. Based on those criteria, as defined by state statute, the variance should be approved. Regarding the criteria to be used for variance discussion, I have a printout of Minnesota's zoning gateway section 462.357 subdivision 62, variance statute for cities and towns, that spells out the five criteria that are used, or to be used for variance discussions. It appears that these five criteria were never clearly spelled out to the planning commission as being criteria that they needed to consider in making their decision. Interestingly, it took, it took me, all it took for me was a simple Google search to come up with this information in a matter of minutes. I have a copy of that available, if you'd like to see, have it. It's a 10-page copy. Finally, there are three approval factors listed for a variance in the City of Mayor subdivision ordinance found on the city's website. By applying those approval factors to Zion's variance request, the variance should have been approved, as it was on November 1st. It does not state that all three factors need to be met for approval, implying that even one factor would be sufficient for approval. Zion's request for a variance desatisfies all three factors. Again, it appears that these approval factors were not clearly discussed with the planning commission before their vote. I have a summation and copies available for each council member, if you'd like, showing that Zion's project meets all three approval factors as outlined in Mayor's subdivision ordinance. Thank you.
All right, John, I'm sorry.
All right.
If you want to, we can continue on then. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, so I'll touch on the off-street parking variance that's being requested here real quick. So just kind of going back in the history of this to start with it. The original variance was looked at by the planning commission. The public hearing was held on November 1st, 2022. At that time, the planning commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the variance to reduce the off-street parking requirements. After that meeting, it was discovered that the public hearing notices were not mailed out correctly to the neighboring residents, so we remailed out notices to the properties and re-held the public hearing at the December 6th planning commission meeting. After lengthy discussion that night, the parking variance was actually voted on three to one to recommend denial of the variance to reduce the off-street parking in another three spaces. And going back even further in history, about 10 years ago, when the school and church did their last expansion, there was a variance requested at that point also to reduce off-street parking. At the time, it was reduced from 67 spaces down to four spaces. That variance was approved, and there is a map in the packet that kind of outlined where adjacent parking spaces were located, whether they were on the street, on parking areas. You know, there is church parking to the south there that can also be used. So on-street parking was looked at, and that was part of the criteria, excuse me, criteria that was granted or looked at in granting that variance. That was discussed and looked at at the meeting as well, and in this case, the expansion is three additional classrooms. So the zoning ordinance off-street parking requirements do require one stall for every additional classroom. So in this case, three additional stalls, and that's the variance requests for those three additional stalls. If the variance was to be denied, the church would have to somewhere put three off-street parking spaces on that site, and that was what the planning commission recommended. Now, if the variance was approved and that three spaces were no longer needed, they could go about with their expansion and their site plan, you know, without having to require any additional off-street parking. As far as some criteria that was talked about in the report itself, there is the following criteria. It's listed, I believe, on Page 2 of your report right now. It does have five to five criteria kind of listed there when looking at a variance. So that was included in the report through the planning commission previously. So with that being said, you know, the discussion at the planning commission was, you know, the additional parking, and obviously parking along Second Street Northwest came up as part of that discussion. And right now, just south of, I guess it's called Christ Corner, it's like a daycare building or facility, there's kind of direct-in parking that's partially on the property, partially in the public right-of-way. Those stalls technically do not count, because the majority of those stalls are still technically in city right-of-way, so they're considered on-street parking, not off-street parking. The parking on the south side of Second Street is diagonal parking that comes if you're driving eastbound on Second, you come in at a 45-degree angle and back out, and then keep going forward. There are pictures that do show that, and the driveline there is substantially tight or enclosed as you're driving through there, and it would be hard to have two-way traffic going down that road when those stalls are all shown, and some of the pictures do show that as well, that Jerry had submitted or whatever. So with that being said, that was part of the discussion, is looking at that and what can be done along Second Street. Parking on the city street is allowed, so anyone can use that, whether it's a church, school, or neighbors, that can be allowed, and, and people can park there. If they're blocking driveways, that would not be allowed. I know there was some discussion about a driveway being blocked a few times. That would be something that'd have to be enforced, and technically, enforcement is not really, you know, something that needs to get involved with the, the variance request itself. But it comes down to, does the city feel that three additional stalls are needed at this point, or can the variance be approved to actually reduce that? So now it'd be down to four off-street parking stalls, still there where that existing garage is. I guess that's kind of the big, the big question item, so. And in the end, just so everyone's aware, the decision on this may end up affecting the site plan itself, which is part of the discussion at the planning commission as well. If parking lot was needed, would more additional screening be needed along that east property line of Mr. Main's property? And now that the fence is going in there, that would probably resolve that either way, so.
Thank you. Any questions for John?
So regardless of the decision tonight, the 67 spaces from 10 years ago, we are not talking about that. We are talking about three spaces.
Correct.
So three cars on the street, potentially more than, like, or off the street, technically.
Yes.
If we require them to make off-street parking, you're talking about three spots.
Three spots.
Okay.
And one thing to be aware of is the three, the existing class, or the proposed classrooms are really just repurposing the existing classrooms that are there from certain rooms into these new spaces. There, you know, according to Jerry, there's no new employees or teachers being added. It's the same, you know, work staff, so, like, by co.
Some buildings, some classrooms from downstairs and from the library up into classrooms now, without the intent of adding, adding people. Jerry, real quick, when we met, it was my understanding that Zion was kind of on board with the parking. They thought doing the parking lot seemed reasonable. Has that, has that changed?
We had looked at it. The problem is, topographically, it doesn't work real well. Our architect is here, and the civil engineer's gone through it too. Topographically, if you try and make it work, we're going to send more water down that back runway, and we've already got a plan that Derek has said works fine for his, keep the water off his property. Topographically, the way that land is sloped, if we make it to a parking lot, it's going to possibly send more water down there and may ruin that, that drainage that we've got there. And the other thing is, too, even if you put three stalls there, by the time you put in a entrance to the small parking lot, I mean, it's three, three stalls in a small parking lot, but if you put an entrance in there, it has to be, what, a 20-foot entrance, takes up two or three parking places along the streets. What have you gained? Nothing. Mr. Zimmerman, I'm talking.
You won't, you won't need, you won't be able to use the existing driveways as the entrance in already?
No, it would not, it would not, that would not be a driveway. That's, that would not be the entrance to the, to the parking stall. And, and as Mr. Anderson said, we are not adding staff. We're not adding cars. We're not adding anything to this. We're just moving classrooms around. All we're doing, we're just moving classrooms from one location to another, and in fact, making it safer for our students, because they don't no longer have to cross the street to come back from church to school on a daily basis. Right now, we have kids going back and forth multiple times a day, because had we put one class there, one entire class there, we'd have had a, I'll cry, the people would not appreciate that. So we've got multiple classes meeting there. It would have, so we've got multiple people going back and forth.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? With that, then, if there's any other questions, I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-4, granting the variance.
That was my question.
This resolution denies the variance.
Oh, that one denies it? Oh, okay. Well, I'll look for a motion, yeah, approving Resolution 2023-4, denying the variance.
No, I don't want to approve that, you know.
Right?
Do you think that one?
Well, is it a motion to deny because that is what the planning and commission?
So the reason this resolution is before us is because this is the recommendation that came up from the planning commission. That is why this is before us right now.
So if we don't get any, if we don't get any motions on this, then that, and then we'll open it up for another motion, if someone prefers to make one. But this is what's in front of us now, to deny it. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Hearing none. Okay, I'll open up if someone else would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance to allow the, or not having the three off-street parking.
Motion to approve the variance, which would require Zion to not install off-street parking. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
So I guess, right, I did listen to the planning and commission meeting online. It was a little difficult, right? You can't see that screen, so I didn't see all of the, the charts and the graphs. I did have a map that I was looking at. I couldn't hear all of the public comments. So if there's something from outside of parking on a Sunday that is of concern to a neighboring property owner, I would like to hear it.
Agreed. Yeah, if we have, if we have issues over there, I, I think we should. We should be discussing them. It's on the website. Yeah, I.
So I, before I vote on this, I'm giving anybody the opportunity that wants to share with me why we shouldn't allow the variance to go through.
Got some more pictures from last Sunday. It was the same thing. They're parking all over, no matter where, they park wherever they want. If they block the lane of traffic.
So is school in on Sunday?
Pardon?
Is school in on Sunday?
This was Sunday. This was just Sunday.
But this is for the school, right? School is Monday through Friday.
Okay, okay, the next time when there's a doings at the school, then I'll, I want your phone, because nobody's got a phone number they can call.
Yeah, they're all on the website.
Website doesn't do any good. I need phone numbers.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Website doesn't do me no good. They don't have website.
Well, then, I mean, Nick and Janelle have them, right?
We'll get them for you. Any other discussion?
Called, I can't answer.
Any other discussion? And I was at that planning and zoning meeting. I was there. I didn't get the impression that they came to their decision to deny the variance based on, that's not the feel I got. I have talked to other people who were there, and they kind of got that feel that maybe that was true, but that's not the feel I got. But reducing, adding three spots and reducing some on-street parking to save, make one, I just, and they're not adding staff. I've gone back and forth on this for the last six weeks, and I, I just don't see it as a concern. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, for me, I think that conversation around this motion lasted well over an hour. So again, not being able to hear all of the public comments and some of that, that's what I was trying to understand, right? You were here, you could feel it. I, I didn't. I tried to do my due diligence to watch it, but.
And like, like said, and like, think, like you've said, if we think there's some parking issues or concerns out there that need to be addressed by the city, we can look at those, but we haven't heard them. that need to be addressed by the city, we can look at those, but we haven't heard them. We haven't heard them in the 15, 20 years I've been on council, I haven't heard of any. So we'll address those if we need to. But, and some of that, that's what their sheriff's department's for. If there's someone parking in someone's driveway, I don't think approving this variance is going to add anything to any traffic, any traffic concerns.
I don't know, I've never had any issues.
I don't know what to say to that. Maybe.
I'm Sue Zimmerman, and I'm Kurt's wife. I live on the street too, but on the south side of the street, on Second Street Northwest, the south side, in front of our house, it's parallel parking. You get to the church and it's diagonal parking, diagonal parking on both sides. And the reason it is that is because it's not signed that it should be parallel parking on the south side of the street. And if it's not signed properly, you can't get anybody to issue a warning to people that they parked the wrong way. That's the problem.
But I think the issue at hand here.
Yeah, yep. And we'll look at those issues if that's a concern that we need to look at as council, but.
Yeah, and that takes, that takes away some of the off-street parking because you can't park as many cars diagonally.
If we have to restripe, we'll restripe. But we'll deal with that at its separate.
Okay, because it is a safety issue. When you come into that intersection and you've got two vehicles like this and only one can get through, to the west of us is mostly where the elderly people live. And fire trucks would never get through.
Emergency vehicles.
Oh, that's an issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second to approve the variance for Zion to not add additional off-street parking. No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. All right, we will go to 14. John?
Okay, the last of the four items is the site plan review. And I kind of mentioned earlier, the planning commission kind of struggled with that because if, you know, depending on the variance, if it was approved, it may require one thing. If it was denied, it may require something different. With the variance being approved at this point, no off-street parking would be required in the area where the old single-family house is being removed, adjacent to Mr. Maine's property there. Also with the discussion earlier and the new landscaping plan that was submitted, a six-foot privacy fence is being put along the, I guess it would be the west property line of the school area, the east property line of Mr. Maine there. And that would extend from the northeast corner of his property down to the front, I believe the front of the house, from an installation standpoint. In lieu of that, the trees that were being proposed would be removed because now there is a continuous screening with that six-foot privacy fence there. As far as the fence being located on the property line, that can be done. It does take the property owner to sign a form that just gives permission to be on the property line. To finish side of the fence would have to be facing the private property of the single-family residence. One thing I do want to note is the landscaping plan does say six-foot high privacy fence by others. It's my understanding this would be put in and installed and maintained by the school itself. So we want to make sure that that is changed on that final site plan. And with that being said, in your report, the planning commission did recommend approval of the site plan based on some different things. I know that's kind of being changed here tonight, but there was 19 conditions listed. And that comes with anything from, you know, requiring the rezoning, the comprehensive plan amendment, you know, Carver County Review, City Engineering Review, lighting, sidewalk installation, the off-street parking variance, all sorts of different things. So that is part of the approval that was recommended by the planning commission. The sidewalk installation also was to be extended the existing sidewalk across the remainder of the property to the west property line. And there, I believe that was looked at by the city engineer. I know there's been some discussion on that as well. But with that being said, we're looking for site plan approval and that would give the school the ability to move forward with submitting a building permit if this was approved here tonight. So.
Go ahead.
The only question I've got is on that sidewalk extension. I think we talked about that. We are more than willing to work with the city on that, but we want to put this, we'll put the sidewalk extension in when there's the plan to put all the way through the west, across both properties. There's no point in us putting a sidewalk extension in now. That's going to stop and not go any further for possibly 15, 20 years. We're glad to work with the city when the time comes and put our share of it in. And we want to be treated the same as the other property owners are being treated in this case.
And I know for me personally, I agree with that. And we've talked about that now as we talked a little bit more today on that. Now the concern comes in about how do we make sure that's going to happen in 10 years? If there's new turnover, new board at Zion or, and so then it came up typically what you do in those situations, you get some sort of a, yeah, an escrow on that. Is that some, I mean, somewhere we need to, we need to know that, yep, Zion's responsible for it. Zion's going to put it in. I don't see putting in 80 feet now to have it in. It doesn't make sense to me. But in 10 years, how do we, when the city comes back to Zion, how, what's our guarantee that, yep, you guys are responsible for it?
I guess a reasonable escrow, maybe with a timeline on it would be nice, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I don't see a problem with that, but I don't think that Zion should be required to put in a sidewalk now.
Okay. But you'd be open to an escrow on some if that was.
If that's necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question on the fence. John said the east and west property. I thought, Jerry, you said the north, south.
The north, the north-south fence running.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me throw it.
Because.
I've had, looked, read that a couple of times too.
Okay. I am directionally challenged, so I just.
So it'd be along here. One more? No, you're right. No, you're right. Yeah, because this is, this is the combined property. You're right. Yep. Sorry. GIS changed. Yep, you're right. So this is currently Derek and Nicole Maine's property. So the six-foot fence would start here and go to roughly there.
That existing house to the east of it is going to be removed.
Yes, that's scheduled to be demolished.
That'll be demolished.
Yeah, there is sidewalk along the first townhouse there on the south side. There's already sidewalk that stubs right to there. You can see it.
Eventually, the plan would be, because we have sidewalk to the east there, is get the whole run going in there. So you have connectivity through the whole thing.
More than likely will come.
There'll have to be a jog there, yeah. But that's where we'll work with the city engineer, make sure it's a nice, smooth transition. Pretty good engineers. Easy walkability. Can you show? We could certainly look at that to make sure we have all that stuff. Well, we'll look at all that when that happens. Can you show about where the 80 feet, where it was, it was supposed to go right to the. John, you want to point? On the sidewalk.
Yeah. Is there, you want me to go up and point it out?
Coming.
Somewhere.
So right now, the sidewalk stops about right there. The old property line was roughly right there. So it already extended about 30, 40 feet into the property. So it'd be from right here to there is what was supposed to be installed. And then you would just have these last two single-family houses where it's missing. It would connect up over here somehow. Where that jog is, that can be determined at a future date. So I don't think it was quite 80, it was more like 50 feet. Actually, the lot was, I believe, 80 feet, but there was already a portion of the sidewalk in the lot.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
I apologize if this has already been covered, but the, another option would be have the school put that in. You have the sidewalk down there that gets extended around the corner and the city fill in that gap. And you'd have a complete sidewalk system along Second Street. And you wouldn't have the logistical issue of getting everybody on board in the future. Now, obviously, that brings an expense to the city.
Yeah. And we talked about that, didn't we? Was there a reason?
We've been talking around it. We just haven't solidified plans.
Okay. About what it's going to look like and there'd be other easements that have to be done, I assume, and things like that?
Because there was some talk of some property dedication to even out the width of the right-of-way and some of those other items we just haven't hammered out yet.
We got to look at that whole road on what we're going to do. Yeah.
Just sort of where one of the conditions is number 10 is a sidewalk and parking easement in favor of the city. And that was to get, right now, you can see the right-of-way is just, there's cars that are basically sitting halfway in the right-of-way, halfway on the church property, is to get the right-of-way dedicated to match to the east and the west. And then also get easement all the way up to the sidewalk. So that's maintained as part of public sidewalks.
Okay.
So, and that is a condition in the approval.
But so is the sidewalk. So we'd have to address number nine, right?
Correct. Approve it with, including number nine.
Exempting number nine. Okay.
I think it was item number 12, a part of the landscaping. Would we like to amend the language in there since we, going to ask it now, I've been playing the GOAT between, between Zion and the Maines on the fence issue. It seems we have agreement. It's going to be a six-foot privacy fence. Zion will construct it. When I talked to you guys, it seemed like on the property line would work. I think amending number 12 landscaping to specify that so it's set in stone is that will be the course of action would be a recommendation as well.
So, so do we approve it more based on that? Or should, do we approve it that Zion will put in a fence where they're supposed to? And if they can get approval, then they can put it on the property line. Otherwise, they go two feet off the property line and just say we put up a fence per our code. And then if they work with the property owners and ask, and get the, then they can put it on the property line? Is that, should we kind of stay out of that side of it?
Yeah, because you're going to, the sign-off is required no matter what by ordinance.
Yeah.
Kind of resolution.
So if we require a fence.
Just so we have it spelled out in there, that the six-foot fence. And it sounds like we have, unless I missed something, it sounds like that seems acceptable to both parties.
Yeah, I would agree that we would just basically change that number 12 to say that a six-foot privacy fence is to be installed by Zion Lutheran School at their cost to be maintained by Zion, and to be, excuse me, and to be maintained by Zion for screening to the property at 217 Second Street Northwest. And then just replace the existing condition.
Okay. All right. Any other clarifications, questions on any of these 18, 19 items?
The stormwater piece got figured out, acceptable.
Yep. Zion submitted an updated stormwater plan for the runoff, and that seemed acceptable to all parties.
All right. No other questions? I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2023-5, resolution approving the site plan for the addition to the Zion Lutheran School with the change to number 12 landscaping to make that a fence installed and paid for by Zion. And number nine sidewalk installation will not be required, but we will work on getting escrow in place for that.
Would that escrow be in the condition?
Yeah, I think it, I think it should. Yeah. Yep. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Are there any concerns with Second Street being able to uphold the construction vehicles?
So as far as that goes, Carver County has denied the use of a construction access off of Blue Jay.
Mm-hmm. Which is number 19.
Yes. So it has to come off a second. Otherwise, there is no way to access the property.
So, but are we concerned that Second Street is going to be able to handle the weight, the wear and tear? I don't know what condition Second Street is in.
Kyle, any input on, I mean, they're, they're built to certain standards. They can hold, what's that road rated for?
I wouldn't have necessarily concerns about the loads. I would say that as with any building project, it's the responsibility of the contractor to take necessary precautions to protect the road so it doesn't get damaged. And if they do damage it before the project can be signed off, on the necessary repairs would have to be made.
And we typically work pretty close with them to make, to try to get them swept when needed. If it's really muddy and a lot of mud's dragging around, we try to get, you know, sweep them up. And we can add some of that into some of the construction stuff to make sure that happens. It's fairly common. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you, John. And yes, thank you. So then next we can go to number 15, awarding the bid for the Public Works Building Edition.
Would you like to give a moment if anybody would like to take their leave?
Yeah. Not that they have to.
We have to suffer through council meetings. That doesn't mean everybody else has to.
I got a lot of questions.
Hey, Mike.
Yeah. I think you give it back to him. Pass it over.
Feel like we're in school. Take one, pass it on.
Turn it in.
Take on, pass it on.
Thank you. Hey, where's my laser pointer?
Laser pointer.
Is there, oh, John had the laser pointer.
We sent it back.
It's probably stuck at me.
I never got it.
The laser pointer. Like so.
Just on that page right there.
Yeah, just on the last page and pass it on.
That's okay.
All right, let's move on to number 15, award the bids for the Public Works Building. All right, we're on to number, item number 15, which is awarding the bids of the Public Works project. So we'd like to lead us off, Tim?
Certainly. I told you I'd be back.
Yeah.
You did.
I apologize for returning with news that I guess wasn't as easy as it was supposed to be or intended to be. But you can see from my recommendation letter, and we have a bid tabulation form for the Public Works Edition, there was a little glitch in the bidding process. As we were vetting the bids of the low bidder, a discovery was made that they mistakenly interpreted one of our alternates, which now results in their losing $44,300 if we proceed the way that we had intended to proceed. So you can see Voss Construction was the low bid. The alternate in question is number five. And this was to remove from our project a four-foot concrete masonry unit, wainscoting around the building. They were supposed to have that amount in their base bid, that $674,850. In vetting their bids, they said unfortunately, they did not do that. However, that's not what we had asked for in the bidding documents. So the council has, in essence, three choices, I guess, three options to move forward. What we would recommend from Olson and Hobby Architects is that you still proceed forward, award the project to Voss Construction. I think you still have a very viable and a project that meets your, meets your budgeting and some of your costs. And so then it just really depends on how you want to proceed with contracting. And so I think, Nick, I don't know if you had that letter sent out from Voss to the entire council there?
Yeah, I did send it.
Kind of with some options. I put some options also in my. Kind of with some options, I put some options also in my recommendation letter, kind of the first option would be the, the first option would be to, in essence, hardline the project, award the project to Voss Construction, but we would award it at the base bid, and the Public Works Committee would like to omit that wainscoting from the project, which would then reduce the base bid by the $44,300, so you can see kind of the result of the contract, and option number one is $637,000. Now, if we move forward with, with that method, it's the best method, obviously, for the city financially, but we're, we're kind of moving into the project knowing that the contractor is at a loss immediately, so they've asked for leniency, and, and I, and number two is an option to, again, award the project to Voss based upon the base bid, but then look at some other negotiation tool to kind of split the baby with them, in essence, understand that they made a mistake, and then it's up to the council to choose how to negotiate that out. And third, I wouldn't recommend this option, but this is to grant full leniency to them and say, we understand you made a mistake, and we'll eat the cost of that. So, there could be some variations in there, but, you know, I guess my recommendation is to move forward with awarding the project to Voss Construction, I just can't tell you how to select the option, I guess that's up to the council, obviously, from my perspective, we follow the documents, the documents say that this is how they should have bid the project, they admitted a mistake, one of my concerns is if you choose to move forward with my option number one, we could start the project with an adversarial relationship with the contractor, then it puts the onus on us to make sure that they're following all the documents, not cutting any quarters. Questions on that, have I been clear or more confusing?
Essentially what happened is, the base bid for the contract was supposed to include the wainscoting, and then alternate number five was to remove it, because we weren't sure what the cost is gonna be, so we said, include it in the base bid, but then give us an alternate that says you can remove it, because if it was gonna be really expensive, well, it's a cosmetic item, we don't need to be spending a lot of money on a cosmetic item. So we got the bids back in, and that's where this alternate number five came in, all of the other ones had them as a deduct, which is what it was called for, Voss had it in as an add, and we knew they had it as, in as an add, see if it was this one. So here's the bid form from Voss Construction. And we scroll down, and then we get to this page, and this is, here's where they put in their base bid, and this is where we get to the alternatives listed, and it says in clear words, provide, provide a credit for all labor materials, this was for windows, so it says negative 6,000, and it shows a negative there, overhead door demolition, this would be re, putting in back in that overhead door portion between the existing building and the addition, and that's obviously 6,000 to the plus, what you meant to be alternative three, concrete apron, this was to reduce the size of the concrete apron out front, we're looking for ways to, again, save some costs, so there you can see it's clearly, if you're gonna reduce the size of the concrete apron, then you can see it's a negative, that's a credit that happens, alternate number four was gutters and downspouts, this was to remove the commercial gutters and downspouts and not do them, so that would provide a credit to the project, here you can see it's a negative, which is the correct way to do it, and then you get down to the masonry wainscoting, and you see $44,300, and it's a positive number, this is where they came back and said, we thought this was an add, and based upon the, the other four, when you see they have the negatives and positives correct there, clearly they mistake, this was an honest mistake, now if they had the rest of them all jumbled up, you go, eh, we don't know what your intent really is, but the last four were all done correctly, so they interpreted those right, so them saying that, we misread this, even though it's pretty clear language that we think, we can tell it was, it was, it was a, it was an honest mistake, and the way they worded it with everything else. So this base bid of $674,850 includes, or does not include the wainscoting, it should have included the wainscoting, so what, when we get all, over to alternate number five, there was an add-on instead of a deduct, so to think about another way, when you come down and look at this line item down here, if they had done it the proper way, and this is, this is just us extrapolating here, their base bid would have been $719,150, you would have had the deduct of 44.3, which would have gotten you back to the 674.850, is another way to look at that, but because of this here, Public Works Committee looked at it, Tim looked at it as well, we believe it's an honest mistake on their part.
It still, still would be our lowest bid.
Voss would still be the lowest bid, even if they did it correct.
Right, so then we, the Public Works Committee met, and that's where we get this bottom block here, so there's all the alternatives, alternative one was to take out windows on the upper side to bring in natural lighting, Public Works Committee felt, well, we wanted to have natural light, we don't want it to be this big in case building that they get no natural light in, it's windows, we don't feel any to get taken out, alternate number two was punching the hole back in, it would be garage doors, so they could move vehicles between those rather than just having an access door in between, they could give vehicles back and forth within the building, that'd be a $6,000 add-in, alternate three was reducing the apron size at two grand, they didn't feel it was worth it, keep it the full-size apron that was originally planned, alternate four were gutters and downspouts, the thought from Public Works Committee is, we'll take that out and see if we can find a different contractor to put them on later for a much cheaper cost.
Yeah, we, we feel based on the bids, we, we, we're hoping we can get it done for less than that, we'll put them in later just on our own. We thought so too.
And comparatively.
Yeah, we thought so too, so that's why we decided to pull that one out, now if it does come in at 10,000, it comes in at 10,000, I mean, that's what, we would have paid for it, so.
Yeah, we figure at this price, we can probably find it for cheaper.
We're, we're pretty sure we can.
And then alternate five was an add-on, so it doesn't get, if you were to select it, in this case, we were, thought it was a $44,300 reduction initially, okay, so we take, remove 44 grand from the base, but then we learned, oops, that's not the case, so in this case, we're gonna remove the wainscoting, but this base bid already has it removed, so you wouldn't add this, you just, you wouldn't add this, you would just keep this number.
Yep, 674.850.
Right.
And our thoughts on that, it was decorative, like he said, at first I thought the existing building, it's just brick that comes up, you know, four feet, I thought it was already on the existing building, and we were just gonna continue on to make it look, there's none on the existing building even, so it'd be, you know, it's all a stack.
Adding it to the whole building.
Except the front, where the doors, in between the doors.
There's a little bit.
There's a little, yeah, there's a little bit, it's not completely, but.
By not adding that wainscoting, we're still in a compliance with
Yes.
Only on the front, and it is on the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody's gonna see it along the side anyway.
Yeah, once you get in behind the fence.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody's gonna drive by and say, hey.
So that was our thought of, of reducing that, just so you know where the conversations were.
And then alternate number six was new metal wall panels on the interior of the existing building to match the metal wall that's gonna be going in on the addition, and we decide, the Public Works Committee said, let's not do that, because that's 6,000, that's assuming, because the base bid does not punch in the overhead door wall, so that six grand accounts for that whole wall facing, now if we're punching a wall in, we could probably negotiate down that number, because there's gonna be square footage punched out now that we're not doing metal for, and if it's a very small amount, maybe they just end up painting it or doing it themselves, if, depending, or we negotiate direct with the contractor that's doing the work, if it becomes a very small square footage, so we're not gonna be spending that six grand on this one, so, Public Works Committee recommend moving forward with two, four, and five initially, then we got the news about Voss Construction in that one, so we had to kind of amend these numbers a little bit, so you take the base bids here with two, four, and five, and then you, you get final cost total, and even at that, Voss Construction is still under by about $31,650 as the low bidder, even with the mucks up. Now, Voss Construction in their letter offered up a handful of options to us, and this, this is where we're gonna need some direction on where council wants to go on this, they offered up these five different options, one and two don't really apply, because we're not going with the wainscoting anyway, really, three and five are the ones that seem, out of the, out of the five, three and five are the only applicable ones, number four really doesn't, and alternate five is not accepted, they will provide the wainscoting, well, we don't want the wainscoting on that, so three is, they'll accept their base bid, their base bid stays the same, the wainscoting is not included in that base amount, and Voss Construction will cover the performance and payment bond cost, so in projects, we, and this isn't included the base bid, because it, depending on the company and their rating, it affects what the performance bond will be, but the performance bond is some, it's, think of it as insurance, so projects generally require performance bonds, and the performance bonds come into play if the contractor bails, and you pull the performance bond, and then that provides the funding in order to get the work done in lieu of the contractor bailing.
And who pays for that now? The performance bond?
The performance bonds are typically paid by the city as part of the project cost.
Okay.
So that was a cost that wasn't included in that 674,000, in the bid form, I broke that out as a separate line.
So that gets added in after, we just wanna make sure council's aware of all the costs going into this. So their number three is that, do it for the base bid, but they will eat the cost of the payment bond, number five is their base bid stays the same price, and the city accepts change order number five as a deduct, so the 44 grand, that's added, but they were talking earlier in their, in their letter about how there was a metal backing that was going to be added, and that was about 20 grand worth, and they're saying, well, we'll work with that, but we'll, we won't do the metal backing, because that's really expensive, we'll do $24,300 worth, which is the rest of it, and they'll work with the architect to get that going, so instead of a 44.3, it would be a 24.3 deduct on that, Tim, feel free to jump in on this, I'm not sure how I, even though it's an option on number five, now we're getting into negotiations on alternatives, whereas the other bidders did not have this opportunity to negotiate on an alternative, so I'm not sure how stable I feel on number five.
So one, we could just, just to make it easy, we could just do nothing and just accept it as is, it was an error on their part, and move forward.
Right.
That's certainly, you know, one of the options.
And that wouldn't, do you think that would cause a strained relationship with them if we?
No, if we do nothing.
If we do nothing.
Right, they'll be happy.
Where we let them change, we accept their error and fix what we have to fix.
Right.
To make them, to make, yeah, to make them mad, we, if we held the line and said, hey, it's your error, you're a company, you're out, you're out 44 grand.
And no, I don't.
You're saying, accept the error, and then, yeah.
And they will, they will stand behind their bid.
Right.
No matter what you choose, they want to work, you know, with the city, we've worked with them on multiple buildings in the past, we've never had any issues, so, I mean, it, it is a legitimate error, but, you know, the documents are, are clear in my mind on how they were supposed to bid it, they made an honest mistake, we kind of went through that, it's just a matter of what tolerance level that the council has, you know, if, if you want it to be as, as lenient, you know, as, as can be, we do nothing, we, we offer them the, the contract at the base bid, and just assume that the alternate number five kind of doesn't exist in our world, and, but I, I think they are willing to also make concessions as their, their letter showed.
Maybe they, we'll find something else we want later on to help us out with in the project, who knows?
Building good relationships.
Right, exactly.
Looking at other bids in other projects too.
Exactly.
For those reasons, so there's some, now, and again, that's, on the flip side of that, the devil, well, wasn't our mistake, it was that, you know.
Right.
You know, but Public Works strongly suggested, from when we came out of it, we do not hold it to them and to have them take $44,000 loss, it's just that working relationship is, it's just not good for anybody.
Not in this climate of construction.
My, you know, I, I certainly don't mind, you know what, they're owning up to it, they're gonna, they're, they need to own it, someone made an error at their job, I, I don't have a problem with them.
It still had them the lowest bid, even with the correction, so it's not like we're getting into some weird thing with low bid, with that error, like, they are still the lowest bid even with the correction.
Right.
And they're offering to own it.
Yeah, I would be fine with them if they're offering to pay the performance bond at 11,000 or whatever that number is, I, to me, that seems reasonable, I mean, it's not even half of the 44,000, you know.
Right.
Yeah, I don't.
That's where I stand, or, I mean, I could certainly go.
I, I just don't think I need to, they made anonymous, honest mistake, I don't think I need to, I know they were trying to provide solutions, I, I don't feel that I need anything extra because of their error, for, from, on my sake, and unless it was supposed to be included in that construction price, or, you know, like, like what the base bid, and everybody usually includes the performance.
Oh, yeah, no, everyone had that pulled out of their bids, I, I asked for that as a separate item, just so that we could see, sometimes if, if you work with a contractor enough, and you've got a good relationship, you may want to waive that fee, but it, it again, is an insurance policy that, you know, I wouldn't recommend getting rid of it, I think it's a very important tool, if something should happen during the project, and Voss, for whatever reason, becomes financially insolvent, they can't do the project, then we've got that bond, and it's 100% of the, the cost of the project, we bring in a new contractor, we finish it up, it's no additional cost to the city then at that point.
So this, I just added this here, so we'll look at this one specific for Voss Construction, because I don't have the actuals for the rest, it was just a 12,000 add-on, just to give rough numbers, because I don't have the actual amounts from the other ones, but, so if Brennan had been the lowest, or Ebert, or Project One had been the lowest, there would have been a performance bond added on at the end of the total that we have in column F, so Voss Construction, with the deducts here, so we got their base bid with the add, with the deduct, and the neutrality of alternate five, that would bring the project to $669,650, add in the 12,000 of the performance bond and the project, the construction portion of the project cost is 681,650 on that.
Yeah, and Ebert's performance bond cost was $5,000, so even then, Voss is, again, the low bidder in kind of every instance.
All right, any other questions? I'll look if someone would like to make a motion on how they'd like to approach this, by awarding the contract to a company, and if we'll just accept, if it's Voss, we just accept their error or some other negotiation.
So in that scenario, Voss is still a low bidder by $24,650.
I'll make the motion to accept Voss Construction for the building of our Public Works Building with, with the correction.
And Public Work Committee recommendation of alternates?
Yes.
Okay.
So which one, which alternates are we talking about then, all of them, or just?
Two, four, and five.
Two, four, and five?
Yeah.
Two would be punching in the hole between the two buildings.
That's an add.
That would be an add of 6,000, right there, alternate number four is removing the downspouts and gutters, and then alternate five would be neutral in this point for Voss, because we're not adding wainscoting in this point, so 681,650 with this motion would be the construction cost.
And are you saying with no changes, Nikki?
Yeah, no changes.
Bid as presented with error? Okay, I'll second that.
And we have a second, any further discussion? And we have second. Any further discussion?
Oh. Why wouldn't we? Allow them to pay for the bond? If they're offering that. As part of. Like they screwed up, they admit it. We understand, we're not going to hold them to the forty four thousand. But why wouldn't we take advantage of having them pay for the bond?
And I and I tend to agree. One, like I said, I mean, it's their error. I'm not even asking for a fifty fifty even.
Right.
We we talked about that too. Should we even try to do that? And. I think there should be something there and I thought that was pretty reasonable, I I thought, but that's not our motion and.
Okay. And I didn't understand five. That was all too much for me with the forty four and the twenty three and the and Nick, you kind of said that too. So.
You know, they they are a business. This is what they do. It was clearly written how they were supposed to do it. It was an error and they're owning it. They're not hiding from it by any means. They're a legit company and. An ethical company, but. You know, and getting into ten thousand dollars, twelve thousand, I'm I'm almost more concerned with the six hundred and eighty one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the addition. Personally seems to be getting up higher than I would like, but it's a bare bone building. There's nothing more we can cut out. I mean, you gotta put a roof on it. Yeah. We're.
Gotta have heat.
Yeah, I mean, it's bare bones. We're not. There's nothing fancy in there, so. All right, any further discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second. All of you say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Aye. Motion carries three, two.
Two no votes for Mike and Peggy.
Me and Peggy. Yep, thank you. Thank you very much.
I will prepare contracts and I'll get those started tomorrow. Nick, I will send those to you for review, just so we can make sure that. We've got everything as as the council understands. What I'll also do is send Voss a notice of award. Just a. One page letter, just to tell them that the the project is awarded to them. Now we'll go through the contracting phase. Get that signed with them, but what I'd like to do is have them immediately order the metal building. Because now, right now, what what I've been told is that. It's favorable scheduling for pre-engineered steel buildings. About six months ago, it was almost a year out. And right now, he said it was like twelve to fourteen weeks. So I'd like to make sure he gets that ordered, ready to go so that. Once spring comes, that building is in hand, ready to be erected. So. We'll kind of set the process right away moving forward, but we'll get the contract signed and then. You'll see me back here again, hopefully with no bad news.
Right. Thanks for coming out again. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Tim. I want to express, I think, from the Public Works Committee, that was a pretty wild Friday.
We got a lot of bids. I feel.
Yeah, it was very good.
The number of bids we had.
It just wasn't supposed to work out that way then. It's supposed to be easy.
Then we will go to the twenty twenty three street maintenance plan.
So with the Public Works Building items settled, we move on to twenty twenty three Streets Plan and you've you've, I believe everybody has seen this map before. There has been a slight, one addition of this section of street for sixty second or Seventh Street, as it's called, for seal coating. Added down and down in here, this intersection for mill and overlay and then Ninth or. Still the name of the road there. Seventieth.
I'll help you.
Thank you. Seventieth for seal coating there. And. Let me get over to that spreadsheet.
The second Street, that's to the north side of Mayor Lutheran, right? Okay.
We're going to patch it next year and then we're going to seal code it. We're not going to seal code it then patch it. That'd be a little on the foolhardy end. So that's the latest update on this. I think council has seen, we've seen this before. We've looked at it previously. So. We'd be looking for approval of this map tonight as the final plan for twenty twenty three moving forward. How that ties in. Financially on this is, so this is the overall picture that we have for the Public Works Building and the street maintenance, as we've got shown there. We're looking at two hundred thousand dollars in seal coating, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in mill and overlay work. There is seven hundred thousand as a placeholder number for the Public Works Building addition. As we get all the contracts finalized and there is. We still have to finalize an approval for some soil testing and concrete testing for the Public Works Building. We're waiting for one more quote to that. Before we can approve that. So that's seven hundred thousand as the placeholder number. Those are the uses of money. And then down here, we have the Seventh Street patching. This was, this is what was supposed to have been done on sixty seventh this year, but the contractor didn't get around to doing it. That's a rollover cost that'll happen in twenty twenty three, but that needed to be included. As far as sources of money, funding that we have for this, we have the two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars from the streets levy for this year. We've got a hundred thousand in the Public Works Building levy for this year. In funding for eleven, we have a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in the Public Works Building Fund. The sale of the old fire hall would be three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. And in Fund four oh five, the street improvement fund where you have a hundred and seventy. And then I did find out that we did do revenue replacement for the ARPA funding, which means we can use it towards these projects. So this money can be included as well. So we include all those funds. We have a total sources of one point, just a hair over one point two million dollars. And then uses of just over one point nine million dollars with a rough difference of seven hundred and six thousand dollars. Now, as I work with. Ailers, so seven hundred and six is the rough beginning number we look at for bonding. And I know coming into the twenty twenty three street maintenance. I was told that council's looking at bonding for this project to do the street work. So I'm going to begin work with Ailers to finalize what that seven oh six will be. There'll be some cost for Ailers to do the bonding and capitalize it interest. Things like that, but Ailers will come up with that final amount on what that seven oh six will go up to. And then we would be looking at that process for bonding so that we can perform the street work. So this is how that financial picture finally comes together on the whole thing. So I think originally it was talking bonding like a one point one million on the whole thing. So. With all the sourcing, funding sources coming together, that gets reduced by a bit, so. Nice to see. And then if you're curious, let's see, where do I got it?
That doesn't. Include sidewalks, right?
No, no. Public Works Committee talked about that too.
What did you talk about?
Sidewalks.
Well, because didn't we, because didn't we talk about possibly, I know it's not part of any of these numbers, but seeing, is it cheaper? Well, because we talked about, do we switch all over to cement? That's the problem. And if we do mill and overlay, it's tar and then you're switching. Materials, so then it really isn't going to save you costs with a contractor because. Our end goal was concrete.
Kind of our last thought was. But also still open to some other discussions. And some of that is true. We did talk about that, but one, we got to get it to council when we talk about getting out of a work session. Council's got to make a decision. Are we going to switch over? And decide that. And then we got to figure out how we're going to do them. It seems to make sense to replace them then while you're doing some streets while they're out there. We got to figure that out. Problem with some of that is our assessment policy is a fifty fifty for homeowners and the city. Yes, so we got it. We're going to relook at the assessment policy too and make sure that that's set. That we think was just a carryover that we just took it from another city and brought it over years ago. And having our residents pay fifty percent of the sidewalks where they're going to argue, I don't want it. It's not doing anything, no value to my home. So we have to look at that policy.
And I have to maintain it. I have to pay for it and maintain it. I'm thinking, I'm glad they're not on Fourth Street.
They asked if we wanted sidewalks on Fourth Street. Everybody said, eh, no.
Right.
So does it get reduced? And should there even be any assessment? But we got to figure that out too. So that'll be coming. And then Nikki, I think that rolls into the now, what do we do now? Once we get a few of those things set.
Because there's some real shady areas. I know that we've done a lot of patching.
Yep.
But even the patching, like the weeds, I can't get over how these weeds can grow through tar so quickly.
See, this is, this is the new progressive, organic asphalt.
Have you seen West Ridge? The whole curb line is like a flowering tree.
We're promoting bees and bee health along with.
Okay, I just, I just know that. I just don't want to.
Have them smell the flowers, Nikki.
Well, yeah, we had those discussions that it began, well, the fifty fifty thing, oh, we need to bring that up. And now we're, we talk about that. Well, now you talk about walkability throughout the community. What do we want mayor to look at for sidewalks all over? And it's like.
But then at that time, do you start talking about lighting along sidewalks if you're tearing them up? Do you start talking? I mean, this is going to be a big can of worms.
Well, I think the trails are somewhat separate. We've talked about trails like in like some of the parks. Putting lighting and trails on the trails. That's not the sidewalks. And so I just, I don't want to, I mean, we've talked about it and there's a couple of hindsights where we wish we would have. Could have. So if we can get it in a sooner, like what percentage, because I know all the new developments are cement now, correct?
Correct.
So like. You know, I would want to see what percentage actually needs to be. I know it's a lot, but changed over, but not every street has sidewalks.
Right.
I think when we looked at it, if I remember, David, if you've got it, hey, bring it up. But I think it was about ninety five hundred. Linear feet or square feet. It was something like that. I think the total cost was about a half million if we replaced everything with five foot wide walk, if I remember right. Everything that's asphalt. To five foot wide walk, five foot concrete walk, because that's what the size of the other concrete walks are. I think it was half a million.
Yeah. And I don't, if every home had a sidewalk, I would agree with an assessment. Because, you know, but that's not fair to people that bought a home that. It has a sidewalk and then you bought a home that without, and so the people without don't have, there's no. But but the people are using, I'm pretty sure everybody is using it. The sidewalks that everybody uses. It's not just, you're not just going back and forth on your sidewalk. You're like, this is mine.
When we do the streets, it's pretty hard to argue that it doesn't add value to your home with new streets, new curb, new gutter. Adding a sidewalk, to me, some people say it deducts value to my home. I don't, you know, so.
Right.
We'll have a hard time with that, I think. But we got to work throughout.
I I'd like it sooner than later, kind of just, just really thinking about the project and making sure that we don't want to include it in any bidding process.
We can do that. We should get one.
Does that make sense? Like, just to make sure that we're not like, if we're set on, nope, we're going to do. Move everything to concrete, then it's a mute point. But if we decide like, you know what, it's just not worth the time and energy to do that and let's just add it to the. Mill and overlay sections, because. There's quite a bit that. There is sidewalk in in those sections.
Right. Yeah, and you're right. And then if we do replace it, we got to keep up on the maintenance better than we had, get more life out of them too.
Yeah, so I think it would just be confirming what percentage of the project would actually have sidewalk. You know, here, here, here is sidewalk. This is sidewalk here. No, but I mean, it it actually isn't a ton because you have sidewalk here, but you have no sidewalk here.
Oh, so you're talking about just redoing this, redoing the sidewalk that is in the twenty twenty three area?
Yes, like that, I mean. As part of the project, because what we did is when we did that, the first grouping. We were like, oh, maybe we should have just redone it and said we had to like pay a separate contract to come in and do all this patchwork because there was a lot of bad sections. So the question is, do we add that in on this or are we going to just do a whole sidewalk review?
And I think if you were to add it in, you would do what? The things that are adjacent or in the project area for this year, and I would add the ones from the previous years that we've already done.
Right. But that would save if we stayed with asphalt.
Stick with the program of having this part of your street.
If you stayed with asphalt, it would most likely what be a cheaper endeavor. And it would, I'm assuming we'd go thicker. Is that, how do you get the weeds to not like push through?
It's all about base.
Okay.
Poor base, poor. Poor base, you get weeds.
So that's what I'm just saying is, I think we need to have.
Sagging the cracks. And so that's happened a lot in a lot of areas. So potentially, we'd have to.
Yeah, let's, let, can we get a meeting, set up Public Works and we'll, we'll start.
Yeah, I just think it, I think we need to kind of have some ideas, because if we are going to just stick with asphalt in the sections that are asphalt, because we don't want to. Mess with whatever, but if we have to have do ADA stuff because it has to be five feet. If we are required to, if we're going to touch it, then we already know the answer then. But if, you know, if it's just, now that I'm for shortcuts, but. We just know that all new sidewalks will be cement. That we just try to maintain cement as most we can, but. I don't know how much of a bigger project it is would be to put cement in and what does that look like?
New additions on cold water for the put in sidewalks later, cement, they're going to start tying into the tarred ones.
Yeah, but we already have that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ninety four hundred feet.
That's a lot. So do we want to invest in cement or just keep the surfaces that we have? And they're not safe. I mean, they're safe, but I don't mean to say they're not safe.
Some other cities, Nikki.
Right.
Okay, true. True, but I walk the most here.
The thing is, you could end up with the same problem with concrete if the base isn't right and all that stuff too. It's.
Okay, well, this isn't the conversation. I just, if we could bring it into the next conversation, I just, I don't want to spend too much time.
We'll get together. We'll get together and we'll start getting some information, then we'll bring it to a work session and one, just make that decision. What are we, which way are we going to go? And then let's add it in and do what we need to do and. Seems to make sense. All right, you want a motion to approve what's presented, the twenty twenty three street project as presented?
Yes, so this is what we would plan to work on for twenty twenty three.
And I say as presented because if something comes up with the with the sidewalks, it may change. So. I'll look for motion to approve the twenty twenty three pavement management plan as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion?
I want to clarify. I, the sidewalks are safe. I just feel. There's some areas of concern if you're not paying attention.
I would say that if you're, that there is a concern that your concern is unsafe, that 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 should be reported.
And it and it ha- all those have been reported and have been addressed.
By the look, I gave you a, if you're lucky, you don't.
No, I think our Public Works is doing a great job and maintained, okay? I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
All right, any further discussion? All of you say aye. Same sign. Motion carries five, zero.
So Davey, you got what you need. This guy got what I need.
I look forward to seeing your email.
All right, seventeen resolution for twenty twenty three designations and appointments.
So we've got the organizational, now we get to the organizational stuff of the meeting. So we've got the annual appointments and designations. And you've got the resolution before you and then you have the listing on the other side. So first on that list looks to be acting mayor, vice mayor. Whatever council would like to do to fill that.
I would recommend continuing on with Nikki would be my recommendation.
I second that.
I agree.
Okay, we'll just do this in one big rapid motion here.
Yep, perfect.
Nikki is acting mayor and then we have community education currently. Peggy's on that.
Derek, are you familiar with the committees and commissions and what this section, what we're doing?
No.
Okay, so we have a planning commission, we have a park and rec commission, and then we have, we have council liaisons who go to these. Attend on these. We kind of split it up and everyone kind of.
Okay.
And what we've been trying to do about every two years is kind of mix it up a little bit so that everyone can kind of get a a a feel from all and how they all operate and what they're talking about from planning to EDA to park and rec. So. This is where we're now kind of volunteering, if you will, or signing up or appointing someone to be council liaisons. To to the. The committees.
I've already done community education.
I've never had a meeting and I don't know that Larry ever attended a community ed meeting either. Like, I think.
He did because he did note some, I remember he came back with a couple council reports that said, but they sometimes have to cancel the meeting cause people can't.
You wanna stay with it?
Sure, that's fine.
Perfect, okay. Planning.
I would, I would like to do it. I have never done planning, but that was what I would, that's my, so. I don't wanna fight over it.
No.
But I've never done on the eight years I've never been on planning.
Cheers. Okay. Perfect. Park, park and rec?
Suppose I can't do three years?
And I don't know if I should.
But can you?
That's what I mean. I don't know that I should.
Oh, cause you're.
Cause Mike's on there.
Yeah. You guys, you conflict.
Who said they wanted to chat?
Did you have a, or there was a chat?
If you want it, it's yours, but.
I'll take it then. I'll take on.
Can I still come to see if it goes?
All right, EDA.
I, I can be off that.
I'll do that, yeah.
Currently, EDA is meeting once a quarter. We're hoping to, I think, get back to monthly at least for a while as things start moving along.
I kinda wanna see it through and see how it goes.
March, April, I wanna get geared up again for that. That's something one of you two wanna be on also?
I wouldn't mind being on it, but I mean, Derek, if there's something that interests you, like.
Park boards once a month, this might be once a month, so it's a factor in timing, you know, schedules.
Next week's park board, Derek.
I'm on vacation.
Park board generally meets, uh, first, first Tuesday of the month at six thirty.
Yep.
Planning commission. No, I'm sorry, second Tuesday of the month is planning, or, uh, park. Park is second Tuesday. Planning commission is first Monday at six thirty.
That's the one Nikki's gonna do is the planning.
I wasn't trying to take it from him. I just had never done it really.
Which one are we talking about now?
We're on the EDA.
There's EDA. I don't need to, I've been on that several times.
And if you don't want to, I'll do it.
I was gonna say, I can do it. I wouldn't mind doing that one.
I still want to, so.
I'll let you two, you, whatever you, if, whatever you two want.
That's where, yeah, I mean.
You go ahead.
You want Peggy too?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Peggy will take EDA and Peggy and Chad. Carver County leaders, it's a once a quarter Zoom call, or it doesn't have to be Zoom, I think they're on site now. It's at, in Carver County. It's usually seven thirty in the morning, eight in the morning. I go, I zoom in. I, I don't attend them to be honest very often. It's rare.
That was the first one I was on.
Not a lot. I gotta, are, are they still zooming? Do you know?
Larry took it when we did it last time. Larry took it over. Um, but I had still been getting the emails and I think it was, you had the option to zoom or attend in person.
That's a very minor one. And even if we don't assign anyone to me, I don't, it would be on, I don't, do we have to have a council member? Should we just delete the council member?
I'm not interested.
All right.
I can't.
Well, it, it just would.
Like what is that work?
Stuff going on in Carver County and so it's their whole group of, it's not just.
Have you found it beneficial?
No, not really, not really, no.
Put them down to the EDA once a quarter.
It was very beneficial, absolutely. Um, just scheduling, it's been tough.
So I can tell you when I did it, right, it was during COVID, so it was, you know, a lot of talk about how they were, different cities were handling COVID. There's a lot of conversations about what's happening in Cheska, Chen, Hassan, Victoria.
So we're forgot about.
Not forgot about, no.
It's just the priorities.
Have a voice, but.
You know, and they ask, you know, introduce yourself and, you know, all of that, so.
We don't have big traffic issues that we're gonna be looking at and two twelve stuff. We don't have big thing, you know, where it's goo, it's beneficial, but it just doesn't have a lot for us here in Western Carver County. Not anything that they've done or forgot about us. It's just, it doesn't. A lot, it's not a big, but anytime you can call in and join.
I was gonna say, I can.
I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna put your name on it, you don't have to do, just one of us needs to be there. And like I said, it's not even a need. So we can either take off council member, if you, one of you two wanna do it, speak up.
Nick, you go though, right?
Yeah. I went to the one in October, I think, and then I haven't done November, December. And I haven't got, I haven't gotten emails for it.
I think it's just quarterly.
It is.
Is it quarterly? Okay, that explains why I haven't gotten emails.
Yeah.
I'll take that on.
All right, perfect. And fire department, assuming s, once we get done on number nineteen, do we need to add, we will add in then Carl Olson in there if that gets approved?
Yeah. Carl Olson will take prep fire.
Oh, he's there already. Thank you. Okay. And that's all of them? All right. Chanel, do you need clarification? You got it all?
Only on one.
I know, I was gonna say you're only on one. Are you okay with that?
Gotta give somebody else a try. I did like Park Board.
Did he steal from me? I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Huh? No, it's good.
It's good.
I mean, there's always so many, there's always so many.
Right.
That's why I never got on planning is cause there's always other people that wanted to.
All right, I'll look for motion to approve.
I'm throwing a wild ball out here. So Public Works Committee is made up of mayor, city engineer, public works, well, Kyle and then myself. Do you wanna add a council member on that one?
It's only during the day.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
If you're adding, but.
I mean, let's do it over my lunch hour.
All right, I'll look for motion to approve twenty twenty-three organization of the city of mayor, uh, as discussed.
Motion, say it.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries five zero. That'll take us to the, uh, fee schedule ordinance two thirty-seven.
So the introduction of ordinance two thirty-seven on the fee schedule, I had, uh, kind of a broad list of notation changes and then I sent also. Okay, yeah, that's just a summary on there. So we had the old fee schedule and it was in a spreadsheet and it it was broken out into a lot of sections and the formatting wasn't all that great. So I redid the whole thing. A lot of it was just porting over things to the new format, just to clean it up quite a bit, uh, reorganizing it a bit, things that made sense to be more administrative fees got slotted under there. Building permit fees didn't change a whole lot. I talked with John about that, about, uh, no, I talked with West Metro about building permit fees, those stay the same. Um, and then I talked with John about planning and zoning fees, so a lot of those stayed the same. I grouped a bunch of them together in this section just cause they were all five hundred dollars plus fifteen hundred dollar escrow, so that just made it easier. Some of the things I changed from, um, a cost to actual cost just because that's the way our billing practice is. I know there was gonna be, I know Mike wanted to bring up this, well, let me. There we go. Be able to read here. Um, we had special council meeting and there were two numbers. There was a hundred and fifty dollars. And then there was thirty dollars per council member. As if you go down further to the old schedule. Here's the old schedule and what it looked like. So a council member per DM for special meeting was thirty dollars, board and commission per DM thirty dollars. And then there were special meeting held before the regular meeting was a hundred and fifty. And then the special council meeting other date requested by residents was fit one fifty, and the special planning commission meeting was two ten, I think.
Who char, who, who has charged that?
Those numbers, who gets charged that?
Or who, is that a, I don't get it.
Someone requests a special meeting, like what Agave did when they wanted their liquor license approved.
So they would pay a hundred and fifty dollars. Okay.
So what I think the intent of this was supposed to be, and cause I don't think we've been charging double, it was really thirty dollars per council member, which equals a hundred and fifty. So a special meeting was a hundred and fifty dollars to cover five council members. I don't think we were charging someone three hundred, a one fifty base plus thirty. So I think that's where the confusion was coming in.
I hope not.
So what I would recommend we do is just put in there and just put thirty dollars per council member in attendance, because we only need a quorum. You know, maybe there's not gonna be five of us here and why pay, you don't have to pay for five people then. So maybe it's thirty dollars per council member in attendance plus one hour of staff fee. Which is seventy-five dollars. Then we've covered anything we've had to do, anything we prepared. If Nick Kankin, Janelle has to come in for the meeting, we're paying, covering her salary. And we have seventy-five dollars as our hourly fee for staff already in the fee schedule.
So was that the hundred and fifty dollars, seventy-five and seventy-five?
No, it'd just be seventy-five, not seventy-five, it just.
I'm exempt.
It would just be seventy-five. Yep, just one hour of, you know, one hour of, um, staff time. Seems to make sense to me. And again, I think, I can think of, we've had two special
Yeah, I don't remember.
Meetings that have attended in fifteen years. This isn't some, this isn't a revenue generator for sure.
Yeah. Could it be seventy-five per staff though? I mean, just in case it happens to be something that Public Works has to be here and Janelle's here and Kyle's here, then.
However.
I mean, if we're doing it per council member, per staff exempting Nick.
We could do that. Staff hour, you know, and staff hours.
I think I also have to take into account, this is gonna be so incredibly rare.
Yep. Either one, I'm fine with. And while we're on it, my only other concern I had is in the the snow shoveling and the weed removal. We have a, for snow shoveling, which would only be a sidewalk, someone's sidewalk, we wouldn't ever do anyone's driveway. I feel it should be, and we have a minimum of two hours. So if someone's sidewalk has to get shoveled, they get charged a hundred and fifty bucks. That just seems too high for me for a ten minute job.
It wasn't ten minutes last week, Mike.
With the equipment they have, yeah.
Assuming they're bringing the tool kit.
The equipment they have.
You do not.
I would suggest just changing to a minimum of one hour.
Yeah, one hour.
If it goes more, if it goes into two hours, you get charged two hours, but a minimum of one hour seems. Now, to Nick's point, we don't wanna make this into something where people get like, oh, I'll just let the city do it and, you know, we're not in the business, it's snow removal.
Right.
But seventy-five dollars still hurts enough that I can't imagine someone would pay to get their sidewalk shoveled for seventy-five bucks.
You make it like twenty to like. Twenty dollars.
Then their taxes go up, cause we need two full-time people more in the winter just to do.
Maybe it is a revenue generator. I'd like to see it go down to one hour minimum personally. Those are my only comments on it. Otherwise, I'm good with everything.
And then Nick, I sent you the question on the baseball club and the liquor license. I know you sent me a reply back, but can you, can you say it to me in layman's terms? What is the fee for?
The three-two license, I thought that was over in Minnesota.
So.
So he sent it back. There's verbiage.
So they updated it with the twenty twenty-two law summaries. They allowed, say, baseball clubs to get in on that and they also allowed, um, oh, man, I can't remember it, but, um, so the on-sale three-two beer license, even though it's not three-two, there are three, still three-two laws on the books. So they've allowed, say, on-sale beer licenses, they've allowed baseball or on-sale malt liquor laws, which would be strong beer. They've allowed baseball clubs to get in on that, but they still have on-sale three-two laws on the book, so it hasn't been completely cleared up yet. So nobody produces three-two beer anymore?
Correct.
Um, that was, Minnesota was the last state and that was in twenty twenty-one, I think, was, we were the last state.
We had some last year. At the beginning of the ball season last year, we had to have three-two beer. It changed in like July.
Yeah.
Or June.
Yeah. I think that was the worst, but I think in twenty twenty-one, they actually stopped producing.
You get like Jim Bob's beer.
Yeah.
So we're keeping this on here just so it aligns with the states.
The states on there, so, um.
But what is the cost gonna be for?
Would be a nonprofit license, yeah.
So the temporary on-sale, the bottom.
Fifteen dollars.
I'd say fifteen bucks is gonna be.
Just stay at that for the nonprofit and.
And for the temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license, you can give an organ, one organization can get fourteen a year. But that each, uh, they can't have one that's more than four consecutive days. So if the baseball club, they wanna get temporary on sale intoxicating, they could get fourteen days worth, but it can't be in a row, but that's not gonna affect them because they only get it for games.
And we don't have lights, so they can only play Saturdays and Sundays and Memorial Day.
So the easy slot would be, um, and I wouldn't suggest we charge them fifteen dollars per temp. I would say when they apply for it, if they have.
yearly one.
Yeah, they would pick the fourteen days they wanna sell the on-sale for.
Instead of to come back every time.
Yeah, list all fourteen right in the initial application, so we can approve all fourteen in one application go, and that's fifteen bucks. Because before they were paying fifteen bucks for the on-sale three-two and it's, we're not gonna jack up the price on them, but.
Okay.
Oh, I think they were paying ten before.
Ten.
I think it was ten, yes.
And that had been changed and.
And then, again, I know you sent me the, I did not read all of the details that you sent regarding the law. I read your excerpt, excerpt that you gave me, so, um.
So there's a, there's an on-sale malt liquor license that now baseball clubs can get, that was recently allowed by the states, but I don't think our ordinance, our ordinance actually allows for a three-two malt liquor license. I don't think it's actually in our code to.
We haven't amended it yet.
So we need to amend our own ordinance to include three-two malt liquor licensing, which we can get on, of course. And alter that language to make sure that the ball clubs could get a malt liquor license, which I would recommend we put it at fifteen bucks, like with the rest of them.
Okay. But nowhere in there did you see anything about the change in how the club can purchase the alcohol, right? So there was, um, conversations about that potentially, right? Currently, the baseball club buys it from the, a bar in town. Who gets it from a distributor. There's nothing in the new law that says, like with the liquor license, like if we're gonna, the baseball come, Cubs, they apply. It's not gonna restrict the ability for the club to purchase from the bar and instead have to go direct to a distributor.
So from the city's standpoint, I don't care where you're getting it.
Okay.
As long as it's legal.
Okay.
The city doesn't check that.
Okay.
We get our fifteen bucks.
Okay. There was some other conversations that were had, so I was asked to.
Yeah, so if they say, is the city gonna check on where we got our, our alcohol from? The answer's no, because we don't regulate that. Purchasing and sale of wholesale stuff like that, that's handled at the state level.
Yep. Okay.
All right, any other concerns or changes? And what are your thoughts? Are you good with changing it to one hour for snow or do you wanna leave it at the two?
I'm fine with one hour.
And then just rewording the council's special meetings?
Yes.
Okay. I'll look for motion to approve the fee schedule with those two changes.
I'll be introducing the ordinance.
Yes, yes, thank you.
So we introduced it at this meeting and so, um, so that's a slight change we're gonna make to the procedures of things. So in state law, you have to post an ordinance for ten days, either on the, on the community bulletin board, on your website, ten days prior to the meeting in which it is adopted. So the procedure you do is you introduce it at one meeting and then at the next meeting you would then adopt it, because then that gives us staff time to post it so that the public has noticed that this is a proposed ordinance that we're gonna be adopting.
I'll look for motion to introduce the fee schedule with the two changes.
We'll make the motion.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries five zero. Uh, can we roll these next two just into one?
Sure.
Is there anything?
I, originally I had these under consent to begin with. I was like, ah, they're hiring decisions, so I just split them out into.
So you don't have, you don't need any background. They've done everything we need to do for the.
Yep, everything's been vetted. Carl Olson was the only one that applied for it.
Yep.
Uh, so.
I'll look for motion to approve, uh, the approval of appointing Carl Olson as fire prevention captain and approval to hire Roger Fringer and Jacob Shearman to the third department.
Make the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries five zero and, uh, welcome Roger and Jacob to the fire department. And thank you, Carl, for your, uh, dedication, um, as fire prevention captain. With that, we will move to city council reports. Councilman Member Wagner, anything to report on?
Um, I delivered to Janelle. Um, I delivered to Janelle the check from the baseball club. So.
Yeah, thank you, I forgot to mention that consent, so I do thank the baseball club for their donation. Uh, Councilmember Eli, anything to report on?
Nope.
Councilmember Health, anything to report on?
I'm in a meeting.
Nothing, I had a lot of public works meetings that you have heard everything about now.
Great job with the snow removal.
With that, I'll look for, yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Everybody commented at the post office, God, you guys do a real good job curb to curb.
Yeah.
Uh, serious.
I'll look for motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. We are adjourned.
Yeah, thank you.
Really?
You think I'm waving to you when you drive by, Kyle? That's really not a wave.